All right, being six o'clock, we'll call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order, please. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing following the pledge. We will have a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will have the reading of the notice, please.
The adjourned annual meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room, 504th Street, Wausau, on Tuesday, February 21st at 6:00 PM, and the agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. And then we will go on. I'd like to request all individuals to please put their cell phones on silent or vibrate, not to be an interruption to the meeting, and I thank you for your compliance. We will proceed to roll call, and I invite everyone to sign in, please. And I would like to welcome all of our visiting visitors, including the viewing audience, and thank them for their interest in county government. We'll move on to Item B, Education, Presentation, and Reports. We have a presentation on the Wausau Metropolitan Area Regional Housing Assessment, and we are so honored to have with us the representative from the regional -- regional -- yeah.
Thank you. Good evening. Sam Westall, North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. I work there, and I still get it wrong. We serve a 10-county area. We do projects like this, and we're just a few blocks away from here. So this project kind of started -- there's concerns over housing affordability, I'm sure you know, but people wanted more of a sense of, you know, how many units of what kind, at what prices, to get a better sense of what sort of development we needed to promote in our region. So we kind of analyzed housing demand using data and surveys, and then moved on to some strategies and programs that help meet that demand. So these are the communities that participated in the strategy. There's eight of them altogether. Rough timeline. We did the data collection last spring into summer, and then did more public participation in summer and fall, and then finalized the document in December. More detailed timelines, the background data, a lot of that's from census. Some of it's from building permits. There's an assortment. We looked at each community's comprehensive plans, zoning documents, existing housing programs from the federal and state government that already exist. We did a public survey for both renters and homeowners. We interviewed a bunch of, you know, contractors, realtors, people who work in low-income housing, to see what they're seeing, and took all of this, made some recommendations, strategies, and programs. They're all in this report, which is posted to our website, along with some conclusions and appendices showing the data that supports those conclusions. I want to give a disclaimer that some of the limitations are within the census data. The newest available at the time was from 2020, and they were estimates. So as you know, inflation's gotten a lot worse since then. Things seem to be changing every day economically in this world. And census data, you can look at who's currently renting and who's currently owning, and what their incomes are, or what their house values are. But it's hard to get a sense of how many people are renting who want to own, or, you know, maybe there's people who are owning who want to downsize into a rental that there's less maintenance if they're an empty nester, or something like that. I'm going to fly through these sides, but they're all in the report, and I can go back to them at the end if we need to. But basically, the big takeaway is we are growing as a region, just slightly slower than the state average, but faster than a lot of our surrounding counties. The blue-green color shows the owner-occupied housing, so there are more owner-occupied units than rental units in the area. And the general trend is the closer to the center of Wausau you get, the more rental units there are, and then farther out in the country, there's more owner-occupied. So, you know, Wausau, Weston, Schofield, they're going to have more rentals. Rib Mountain, Maine, they're going to have more owner-occupied. Cronin-Wetter grew the fastest as a percent. They added quite a bit of housing units over the past two decades. But Wausau added the most total units, which is about 2,000, with Weston just behind them at about 1,800. The dark blue shows single-family detached homes. That's the dominant style around here. As you move to the right on the graph, you can see the different mix of housing units. And again, the more rural, the more common the single-family products are. The more urban, the more of a variety you get. The green shows mobile homes. So you can just see the proportions of how many different styles there are. This shows different years the structure was built. So you can see Rib Mountain was largely built in the 80s and 90s. Wausau has a great share of housing that was built before 1939. Cronin-Wetter's got a lot of housing built in the last couple decades, and you can see how each community stacks up against each other age-wise. Here you have two different data sources. So on the left, you have Census 2020 estimates, and then on the right, you have April 2022 sales data that I pulled from Realtor and Redfin. As you can see, the 2022 -- if you take Cronin-Wetter, for example, it's over $100,000 more for the average home price than it was in the census data from just two years prior. So that shows you how much stuff has gone up in the past couple of years, and just how data can vary between sources. So throughout this project, people keep talking about affordable housing, and there's a lot of ideas of what that could look like. We stuck with sort of the standard definition, which is you're not spending more than 30% of your income on housing. So cost burden is anything over 30%, and that would be in the blue-green color. And extremely cost burdened is over 50% of your income on housing. And people who are renters tend to be more cost burdened than owners. Looking through comprehensive plans, there's strong support in this region for supporting maintenance of existing homes, whether it's through a loan program for renovations or code enforcement. There's a desire to meet the new housing demand because people are feeling that choices are limited. And, you know, good planning and infill, you can maximize your existing infrastructure by promoting housing on vacant sites that already exist, rather than running more infrastructure out before stuff is built. And that making sure that new housing is compatible with its surroundings, and promoting aging-in-place programs. That's, you know, if you need money to build a ramp up to your front door, or get into a tub, that is easier to access, those kind of programs that are out there. Some of the comprehensive plans mentioned using TIF to revitalize older neighborhoods or to build new housing. There's opportunity to explore partnerships with agencies or nonprofits that are already in the region to help build housing. Some are considering accessory dwelling units, although I don't think many of them have it written to their code yet, which is, which would be like a little cottage in your backyard that adds another housing unit to your property. Walkability and bikeability help save on transportation costs if done well. And then finally, protecting natural features. I know I live by the Eau Claire River, and those trails get a lot of use, so it makes some neighborhoods very attractive to have those amenities. Things that increase costs through zoning ordinances and subdivision ordinances are the larger lot sizes and the minimum square footage. My first house was in western Wisconsin, and it was about 800 square foot, and it was built in the 50s. And I couldn't physically build that in the neighborhood I live in now because of the zoning ordinance. The minimum's, I think, 1,200 square feet where I live now. So it's harder to find those starter products because we're decades into those not really having been built. Adding parking and design requirements, parking lots are expensive. If you've got a senior housing complex, do you really need two parking spots per unit when it's likely that many people don't have two cars? Or design requirements, like adding stone or brick or other facade improvements, which do, you know, help its appearance, but they definitely drive up the cost, and that cost is passed on to the renter or the buyer. And finally, having maximum densities. Sometimes density isn't appropriate, other times it is, but no one can try it if it's all out banned in certain communities. Things that decrease costs are sort of loosening up some of these things where it's appropriate. That doesn't mean, you know, the same thing has to be everywhere. And just allowing for more of a variety of housing types. I know in some other meetings I've had, there's a lot of people who, you know, are maybe 60, 70 years old, and they say, "I can live in my house for now, but I have nothing to downsize into when I no longer can physically keep it up." So that's one thing to consider. And then mixed-use transit-oriented design, that'd be like, on Rib Mountain, there's some properties where they're thinking, "Well, it's on a main road that can handle the excess traffic volume, so maybe apartments are more appropriate there." And then more people can walk to work or ride the bus. And then finally, missing middle housing. You'll hear that term come up. Basically, you've got your single-family homes on one end, and then you've got apartment complexes on the other end, but everything in between. So your twin homes, townhomes, condos, things where you have the chance to build equity if you can't afford the forever home just yet, or if you want something to downsize into where someone else handles the maintenance. Those haven't been built as frequently as they were prior to World War II. So there's, among certain buyers, there's more of an interest in those products than compared to maybe a decade or two ago. All right. This part was tricky because interest rates keep changing, but we took the census data, looking at incomes versus what people are spending on their rent, or what their house value is. This is kind of how I lined them up. Results might vary based on your credit score or what lender you're going to, but this is kind of a broad analysis to see where the shortages are in the housing market. Everything in a red box is where the shortages are, where there's more people who can afford the units than there are units available at that price point. So this pattern you're going to see over and over. It tends to be the lowest incomes and the highest incomes, which you might think, "Well, no one can find an average middle-class house anymore. There's so much competition." And part of that's because there's so much competition coming from both ends of the market. Everyone's sort of competing for the same product. So this would be all owner-occupied households. This would be all renter-occupied households. You can see the same pattern. Very few choices if you make above a certain amount. Not that everyone who makes above a certain amount wants to necessarily spend more, but, you know, say, if you're a higher earner and you want to move to this region and just rent for a few years, and you don't mind a higher-end product while you get a sense of where you want to live, those aren't available. And then people with more moderate incomes get competed against for sort of middle-income housing. And then the lowest-income housing is the hardest to build and the hardest to find. This pattern repeats itself again. This is all renters and homeowners combined. And then the workforce, you know, this plays a role in attracting people to fill all these open positions that people are struggling to fill. So between 60% and 120% of your area median income is the bulk of your workforce. So that would be roughly 38 grand a year to 75 grand a year. For this analysis, though, I basically decided to take everyone from age 25 to age 65, because that's going to be the bulk of your workforce. And again, you have the same pattern when you compare to both rental and owner-occupied units. Finally, senior housing. This is more of an apples-to-oranges comparison because we're taking one segment of the population versus all the housing units, but it does give you a sense of wherever you fall in this bracket, how many choices you will have that you can afford. This is done part of a nationwide survey. It basically shows that people want bigger houses than what is in the existing supply, but a lot of the newest homes are much bigger than what people need. I think part of that is, I get the sense from talking to contractors, that the larger houses give us safer margin because you can charge more, and then there's less risk. We'll get into that a little bit later. The Department of Administration does projections through 2040. I think they're going to come out with a new set this year, but the last time they did them was in 2013. So we took those, lined them up against how much did we actually grow as a region, and we were slightly slower than we were projected to be. So I kind of toned down the numbers to reflect that, but I left enough room for a healthy vacancy rate. And these are the numbers we came up with. Basically, we anticipate 4,500 housing units by 2040, but the bulk of them are in the immediate future. So if you look at 2025, that would be, you know, 2,077 units between 2020 and 2025, and we're already halfway into that among these eight communities, and then another 1,153 between 25 and 2030. One thing, too, is even when a population sort of plateaus, because households are smaller, there can still be more demand because more people are living alone, and more people are having fewer kids. So some people might think, "Well, our population isn't growing that fast. Why do we need so many units?" Part of that is because household size has decreased. All right. So we did these surveys. They were online, but they're hard copies. If people wanted them, we had separate questions for buyers and renters, for people looking to stay where they're living, but it asked mainly the same stuff. So, and then we did some interviews for, we talked to some realtors, landlords, a few contractors, and some housing agencies and organizations. And then we held three open houses, one at the city Wausau. That one was very well attended. It was on the news. And then Rib Mountain and Weston, less attended, but we still had some really good conversations there where we learned a lot. So the biggest things people look for when shopping for a house are location, price, size, safety, school district. Three-bedroom, two-bath is the most common. I thought it was surprising that more people want a two-bedroom than a four-bedroom. I think that has changed since I was a kid, and we have a lot of four-bedroom homes built in the 90s and the 2000s versus the newer ones. Most people want less than a 20-minute commute, and most people want either a single-family home or an apartment they can rent, and they don't have to spend more than 30% of their income on. Now, that doesn't mean that missing middle stuff I mentioned earlier isn't important, because sometimes people want to jump into a house someday, but they can't afford it quite yet. So a smaller owner-occupied product where they can build some equity might be that stepping stone that is needed. So if you take the, the bulk of the responses fell between, people want between 200, or 750 and 2,500 square feet for purchase. It'd be between 125 grand or 400 grand, or between 500 and 1,250 a month to rent. So that would be like, the vast majority of responses was in this range. But within that range, there were smaller categories, and the single most popular one was between 1,000 and 1,600 square feet, between 175 and 250,000 to buy, or between 500 and $800 a month to rent. People like the attached garages, the low-maintenance, open-floor plans. People weren't as interested in the higher-end finishes, at least the ones who responded to the survey. It's hard to find accessible units for people with mobility issues. Rent goes up a lot for people who are already in units, but then their property doesn't always improve. And then on the flip side, sometimes people's properties do improve, and then rent goes so much higher that they can no longer afford it. Most people would prefer more room, or less room, or a better location. So I wonder if that means people are locked in, especially with all the refinancing with the lower rates the past couple of years, if there's a lot of people who do want to upsize or downsize, but we're kind of locked in because either their house is paid off, or they like their mortgage rate, or, you know, the deck isn't being shuffled. First Realtor I talked to speculates that there, we need more entry-level housing. There's very few that are being built new, but also sort of the step-up housing, 350 to 500, which seems a lot to me, but a lot of people who have been in their homes for a while saw the big equity gains in the past few years, might have more to put towards a bigger house. Even with inflation, you know, there, there is a lot of equity because of the housing market. Infrastructure costs are a huge barrier. That's why it's so hard to find lots, because just the startup costs of putting a road and some pipes in are so much higher than they used to be. Studios, townhomes, condos, ADA, accessible units, those are, there's demand for them. There's less of them in this region compared to comparable markets. And at the time, interest was 5% when I interviewed him. Now, I think today it was 6.32 is the average for a 30. That's still relatively low compared to what my parents paid when I was younger. So even if demand has cooled these last couple of months, that doesn't mean it's gone away forever. And then finally, it's a very attractive place to live. This Realtor actually was from one of the cities on the east coast, and then decided to raise a family here, and thinks that a lot of people would do the same if maybe there were a few more airlines or amenities. Another Realtor I talked to was actually a team of two realtors. They've noticed more people relocating here from out of state. Again, the three-bedroom, two-bath product is still in high demand, and it's really hard to come by. There is hardly any construction under $300,000. I've seen a few buy levels, and I think that's it the last time I checked. A lot of people wanting to build get sticker shock. Starter homes under $180,000, even older ones are really hard to find, and if you do find one, they tend to have lots of repairs. Conventional loans have fewest contingencies. So if you have like a USDA loan or a FHA loan, I know my first house, I used a USDA loan, and there's peeling paint that we had to paint before we could close on the loan. So when you've got 10 people bidding on a house, well, the person who has the product with more contingencies is going to be at a disadvantage. More people are choosing to stay in their home and remodel instead of upgrading because they're just not finding what they want. And then, again, it's hard to find both lots that are platted in the city, but also if you want to live out in the country and build, land costs are up and less available than they used to be. This company both develops and manages property. They find that the lower the rent, the more applicants they have for a given unit. They're building fewer two-bedroom units because rent's gone up, and more people are going back to a one-bedroom to save money, or they just can't find a house, so they're renting a three-bedroom. They've done cost-cutting, like reducing the lawn area that they irrigate, and getting different cabinet pulls, these really fine-grained things that they hadn't had to consider before, just because every project they did, a different thing was back-ordered or delayed, so they had to cut costs wherever they could. And even so, rent still goes up. A big concern they have is when you work between different communities, everyone has a different development process, and when they're not efficient, it can lose, or a lot of money for the developer, which ultimately is passed on through the rent or the purchase price. Rents increase when design requirements are added, and then twin homes and duplexes are relatively rare in this area compared to other markets, but there could be demand for them. When speaking with someone who works with low-income housing, there is definitely a need, and again, those aging units are affordable, but they're usually in terrible shape. When a landlord can include utilities and rent, it helps, you know, if someone's 18 years old and getting their first rental, they don't have much of a credit history. But this way, you only have to qualify for one thing, instead of having to qualify for both rent and utilities. Inflation and rent makes it really hard to save up for a house. There's also high demand for empty nesters looking to downsize into a low-maintenance product. Some people are paying over $1,500 to have a product where they no longer have to shovel, or mow, or rake, or anything like that. So she recommends more owner-occupied choices, you know, smaller homes, smaller lots, condos, that sort of thing, so that people can have a way to sort of build up and eventually get into a single-family home if they would like. I went to a presentation from a builder in the Fox Cities. He does a lot of volume building, which we really just don't have here as much anymore, where his prices start at 295,000 for a 1,300-square-foot ranch-style home on a 40-foot lot, which is not a lot of house compared to what that used to be able to get you. But he's able to do this for only five grand down, because he can hold the land long-term, and he's got the size of a business that allows for that, because otherwise, if you build your own house, you need 25% down typically for a construction loan. The business model only works because of the size that they are. And multifamily is in demand, because he does that, too, but single-family is ultimately what most people still want to, even if they can't get into it tomorrow, you know, someday. Cost savings that they use, they narrow their streets. So this can be tricky when you've got snowplows, fire trucks, other people using the streets that aren't used to the narrower widths. But, you know, a lot of times, if you have an established neighborhood, it's harder to pull off multifamily because there's a lot of concern towards it, whereas, you know, a subdivision next door, even if it has smaller lots and narrower roads, is more seen as compatible by a neighboring neighborhood that's already there. Land costs are really high. Lots are hard to find. This is not just a Wausau problem. It's everywhere. And so if you can sort of pick up vacant lots scattered throughout the city and even rezone them to two-family, then you can get a lot more people into housing more easily. So, yeah, there's three configuration. They only do parking on one side. They only do sidewalk on one side. They wait to install the sidewalk because it can get damaged by equipment as the houses are being built, if they have to do it right away, because some municipalities will require that. And then finally, it's always cheaper to finish a basement than it is to add more above-ground square footage, and that's also kind of why buy levels tend to be the entry-level home around here, is because you're only digging half a basement. A local contractor I spoke to, it's really hard to find workers. There's a lot of retirements. He partners with a local college, and even then, people can make more money elsewhere. And it takes a lot of skills to learn to get into contracting. Even though lumber's gone back down, other materials have been up 30%. Development fees in this region are low, so that's the fees you pay when you're building a, or you're pulling a building permit, or getting your design approval. But infrastructure costs are really high. I did see a PowerPoint from another presentation where someone did a hypothetical subdivision here and one in Madison, and it was actually more profitable in Madison, even though it was cheaper to build here because you can, people in Madison have higher incomes and can pay the higher costs, whereas infrastructure would cost the same between the two communities. So that's what makes it challenging to get new subdivisions started up here. There are fewer entry-level homes that are being built as a new construction than in the past. It's more mid to upper end. And then minimum lot sizes, setbacks, density. If you're requiring large lots and large setbacks, it's harder to create those entry-level products. All right. So there's a lot of existing funding programs through the federal and state government. I won't get into those. They're all in the report. They've been around for a while. There's some that are emerging, like the bipartisan infrastructure law. And then finally, right off the bat, the easiest things to start encouraging more of a variety of housing, especially the entry-level stuff, is to start evaluating zoning ordinances and seeing if there's excessive requirements in each community. Now, this document doesn't tell everyone they have to do any of this. This is more of a toolbox that each community can say, "Okay, what works for us?" Getting planning documents updated helps the community understand, "Okay, what type of housing is expected where?" So it's not a surprise when an interested developer does come in and want to build there. And then reaching out to developers, saying, "Hey, we've got some land here. If someone's interested in selling," it'd be ideal for multifamily, or be ideal for single-family. And then finally, again, identifying infill redevelopment sites, so you're maximizing your existing infrastructure before you're having to build more. There's some other strategies that help finance construction, because costs are so prohibitively expensive these days. The three on this first bullet point do take a lot of effort, so they're only usually common in larger cities, but some mid-sized cities are starting to adopt them. Land trusts are where the land is held by an organization or municipality, and then it's leased to someone who builds a home on it, so that the cost to getting into that house are a little lower. And then when they sell the house, they get part of that lease that they paid credited back towards them. Land banks are more where you assemble land and then sell to a developer at a discount. That's often done by nonprofits or a municipality. And finally, housing trusts, these are more difficult. They require a lot of funding, and sometimes it comes a little bit from the state, sometimes from the federal government, sometimes from the local budget. But sometimes they're necessary to build the lowest-income units, because those are the hardest to build without some sort of subsidy. And then I think that's the one, too, where the tax increment financing policy, where if you leave it open for an extra year, you can put that money into a housing trust. That's a new, relatively new state policy that came out. Development bonuses, that's where you can allow for more density, or fewer parking spaces. If, say, a developer comes in and says, "We're going to do this many senior units, or this many affordable units, units for veterans," and then you can sort of relax the zoning requirements for them if they're providing something above and beyond. Reaching out to employers and partnering, some big employers have a hard time filling their positions, and they start saying, "Well, maybe we should start building our own housing." I know it's gone on elsewhere in the state. Reaching out to developers, this could be anywhere from just calling somebody up and seeing if they're interested, or, you know, putting together maps of vacant land in your community, or contacts for different developers who have vacant land that's able to be developed. Design assistance, say someone's of more moderate or low income, and they want to fix up their house, you can maybe waive the building permit fee, or have someone guide them through how to redesign their home to get it up to code, so they don't have to invest a ton of money, only to be turned down because they missed something. Accessory dwelling units, it's a, I know, that can be kind of a controversial one, but allowing, they're sometimes called in-law suites, that, you know, if you have an in-law that you want to take care of, you can build them a little cottage on your own property, or you can rent it out to a college student, that sort of thing. Home replacement, this is more rare. La Crosse does it, though. It's where they have this revolving fund, where they tear down condemned houses and build new ones. When that one gets sold to an income-qualified family, it recharges the revolving, the fund, and then they can build another house, and they partner with a tech school to build those. Rent-a-hone is, is where there's designated housing units where people can rent to begin with, so they can get into it. And then the terms of the rent perfect gets credited towards a down payment eventually, and then they can convert it to a mortgage. And then finally, some metro areas have a regional organization that sort of advocates, they go around, you know, educating people on personal finance, helping them find housing, or showing up to meetings and providing feedback when developments are proposed. Financial strategies are a little more tricky, because, you know, if taxes go up, that also impacts affordability. So we have to think of that as well. There's TIF, there's a traditional TIF that we're used to, where the tax revenue pays off the loan that was used to finance infrastructure costs typically, but now there's a reverse TIF, where the developer takes on the loan, and so there's less risk on the taxpayer. And then there's also pay-as-you-go, where the revenue gets accumulated, then it goes back to the developer after the fact. So it's sort of like, it can be like a lump sum reimbursement, and that way, there's no debt being taken on. Fee waivers, like I mentioned, if someone's looking to build or remodel, our fees are relatively low in this area, so it wouldn't make a huge impact, but for some people, it might. Just saying, "Well, you're fixing up a 100-year-old house, you know, we'll, we'll cover the building permit so that you can, you know, save some money and do a good job of it." And then finally, a lot of departments in our area, so like, you know, Cronin-Wetter, Rib Mountain, a lot of people only have one or two staff. There's not really a full-time grant specialist like there would be in a larger city, who can monitor every funding source that comes out from the state or the federal government, and apply for grants to help developers, or help people get into housing. So that could be done regionally, or each individual municipality might budget hours for that, just to have someone monitor and implement those programs. We do some of that, too. I've only worked for RPC for almost a year, so I haven't done a ton with that, but feel free to give us a call if you have questions on that. Finally, there's a few local examples in our area. My apologies if, apologize if the accuracy is a little off. I got these mainly from newspaper articles, but Merrill had three 12-unit buildings come in, and they did a pay-as-you-go TIF just to put the roads in, and then it was, you know, a multi-phase thing. Wasn't, you know, a ton of housing or a huge project by any means, but it provided a lot of really needed sort of working-class housing near the industrial park. Edgar, I didn't have as many details on Edgar, but I know they had an industrial park where the grading wasn't quite right for the developers who were interested, so they moved the industrial park, and then the old one, since it was already owned by the municipality, they turned it into, they advertised it to developers, and it's going to be a mix of single and multifamily housing. Lincoln County Economic Development Corporation issued some RFPs advertising to sites to developers. developers, one in Merrill, one in Tomahawk, saying, we need senior housing, we need workforce housing, we're looking at this many units, this many bedrooms, you can have the land for free if you give us a good product. So that's out, and we're kind of seeing what comes of that. And then WASA's done a lot of different strategies, they've got a community development block grant program, they've done brownfield redevelopment, they've done infill, they rewrote their zoning code to allow for more styles of housing. And then to help, you know, the housing that was built hundreds of years, a hundred years ago, that might not need a modern zoning code, it's easier to fix up when those zoning barriers are removed. So, big takeaway is we need housing of all types. Our population's growing, our median age is getting older, it's older than the state average, but I don't think by a ton, it's more than just Wisconsin where, you know, our country's median age is climbing, so that will affect what people's choices will be. So amending zoning and subdivision ordinances is the easiest first step, working with developers, agencies, nonprofits, seeing what strategies from the list I just shared could be used to help make projects, projects happen more feasibly. Educating residents, updating all your planning documents, and then all the financial tools we just discussed, and then looking to some of those local examples I just mentioned from our area, you might want to give them a call if you're interested. And then finally, just monitoring funding sources as they come out to help developers close the gap. I'm hearing more and more too, that developers will get the loan to build their project and then by the time they get everything approved, the project will cost a lot more because of inflation, so there's always some sort of gap that some of these funding sources can help bridge. So, that was a lot, so thanks for being patient, here's my contact information, I don't know if we want to do questions or not, but feel free to reach me.
Yeah, we'll open it up for questions, and thank you, Sam, for that presentation. I guess if there was one question that I would ask is, what do you see as the biggest barrier to affordable housing, since that seems to be the largest need that the county has control over?
Yeah, I'd say the biggest barrier would have to be just the cost of building it. Not only the construction costs for the structures, but for the infrastructure that's serving it. That's why you see more proposals for the higher-end housing because there's thicker margins to work with. It's very hard to do the lowest income housing without some sort of assistance, given the tools we have.
Okay. Supervisor Rosenberg.
You're using 30% of income, gross income, for both rental and owning?
Yep.
Isn't there a huge difference there? I mean, rental is 30%, but if you're, if you're buying on a fixed mortgage, that continues to go down as a percent. Your rent keeps going up and that mortgage stays the same.
Yes.
You're also buying into an appreciating asset, so that the price of that house, do you think it's fair to leave it at 30% if you're buying? If it's 35 or 40%, you're going to be down there to 30%. If you start at 30%, you're down in the 20s.
Yes, yep, that's definitely something to consider. So we stuck with 30% just because that's kind of the national, I would say textbook definition. And it's also a safer number to use when you're talking about, you know, people from all credit backgrounds, what they could qualify for, for a mortgage. But, yeah, that is true. I mean, with my mortgage, I know within reason why I'll be paying for the next several decades, whereas if you're renting, you never know what next year's rent's going to be. So that's possibly why the cost burden is often higher for a renter household too.
Other questions, other questions for Sam. Supervisor Shafinski.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, a lot of detail there. My question to you is, at the end, the slide that was missing, is, give us one, two, or three, your top needs that we as a county could do and take action on, you know, potentially. What would those be?
Yeah, so that is a challenge, because most of the programs are geared towards municipalities rather than at the county level. So, you know, ultimately, you guys are out in your own communities and can maybe give guidance towards these individual municipalities, but so far, there just aren't really county level programs out there to pull examples from. One would be maybe the Regional Housing Coalition, that could be, you know, that'd be nonprofit-led or whatever. But another could be, maybe there's a regional grant specialist that is in the budget. You know, it's just, there's not a lot out there, it's mainly municipal level stuff, and then the programs that come from the state and the feds tend to be for municipalities rather than counties, so that's the hard part.
Any other questions by the board? Well, thank you, Sam, very, very interesting presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll move on then to item B8, and that is standing committee, reports by standing committee chairpersons or designees. And Supervisor Robinson, please.
Thank you, the Finance Committee, or Human Resources Finance and Property Committee met earlier today, and I want to bring to your attention two items. One is we developed a timeline that we'll be presenting at the March meeting to the County Board for the 2024 budget. And secondly, we were approached yesterday by Frontier Communications relative to their submittal of a Public Service Commission broadband expansion grant, and they, we approved, partnering with them and wrote a letter of support and committed at the Finance Committee level, $10,000 for two separate projects in the more urbanized area, they're trying to expand service than they had refined it to two grants, one with 117 homes and businesses and one with 74. There's $14.1 million available through the PSE grant cycle, so it's going to be very competitive. We may be back to the County Board at a later date asking or requesting ARPA funds for that funding, but we needed to act today because the applications are due on the 23rd.
Other announcements and/or by standing committee chairs or designees? Any other reports? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item C, Consent Agenda, item C9 through item C13C. What is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Drebek and seconded by Supervisor Mask. Supervisor Sandalsky.
Yeah, I got a question, I was wondering, I got two, actually two things. First, I'd like to get, have 13B, can I get that one, a separate vote on that one?
There's been a request to separate item 13B, 13B has been pulled from the consent agenda and will be voted on separately.
Got one more thing too. So we have some great opportunities here. Last week, as we listened to our chamber and a representative from the Wisconsin Counties Association, they asked for more public-private partnerships, and I'm going to actually ask the Parks Department right now to participate in this and go out and ask for donations from businesses and resources from these businesses. There are several businesses that have, that have actually done this in the past, take the Greenac Field House, Haldor Ball Diamond, and Mozeni River Park, a few that come to mind, instead of putting massive debt on our county and our taxpayers, let's kind of think outside the box here. And first, I asked for business support, and at this present time, I'll vote no on this, in hopes that the Parks Department will take some suggestions and maybe reach out to our local businesses. Thank you.
Well, first off, the, the plan is just that, it is a plan for the west side of the county and more in particular, the park over there. As far as whether or not anything goes forward, that will always come before this board in the future, a future point. There will be opportunity to actually have those kind of discussions that Supervisor Sandalsky is offering for each potential phase of the plan, such as the, whether or not we stay engaged or involved in ice arena, providing ice arena. There'll be a community involvement and discussion. So again, this is just a plan, this is, and the board had asked for what the funding cost was based on the design, but that, again, is not what you're really approving, and that's why it wasn't originally provided. It was an estimate, and that's today's numbers. Those numbers are going to change depending on when that development actually, if or when that takes place. So I just want to make everybody aware that that's, you know, a future, and that will always come before this board in a CIP project, and the board will have a discussion and opportunity to talk about it then. And by all means, please, the Corp Counsel would like to address the board.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, so because item 13B was pulled and that we voted on separately, the issue before you is still the consent agenda, the remaining items C9 through C13A and C. So there's been a motion and second on that, there needs to be a vote on that before we get to the vote and debate on the West Side Master Plan. So just, just so we don't have any continued comments on that, because we're not yet on that agenda item.
Okay, so we're back to the consent agenda, items C9 through C13C, excluding items 13B. Supervisor Straub, do you still wish to address the board?
Yes, I do, Chair.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to separate 12A from the consent agenda for a separate vote.
Been a request to separate item 13A.
No, 12A.
Excuse me, 12A, 12A. 12A has been requested and is granted. Any other discussion on the consent agenda items? Now, the consent agenda items are items C9 through items C13C minus item C13B and 12 item B. 12A, excuse me, 12A. Any other discussion? Okay, we will proceed to vote on the remaining motion. And Supervisor Seifelt, could you vote?
Yes, please.
And voted aye. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. And now the clerk needs to enter each one of these separately. We will proceed with item 13A, a resolution requesting the state to revise the current real estate transfer fee. 12A, excuse me, 12A, resolution to request the state to revise.
They have to do Eldron.
Ah, we'll get to 12A. 12A is the Town of Eldron rezone, the Lori Boots for Magdalen Conrad Trust. That will be the first item. Okay, can I, what is your pleasure? I got a motion by Supervisor Jeong and a second by Supervisor Ritter. Supervisor Straub.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I pulled this item was to, when I saw that dashed line going through the middle of the proposed rezon, the new five-acre parcel, I went onto satellite view on various places where I could see what was going on, where that trail was leading to. And then, actually, that map that we're looking at on page 45 is not depicting a true driveway there because there's a Y in the road right at the top there. So there's another trail, actually, because of the inaccuracy of the map that we're looking at on page 45. I took the liberty to stop over at the Conservation Planning and Zoning Office yesterday afternoon, and I spoke with two gentlemen in length, and there's two recorded easements. And if that dotted line that's going through the middle of the parcel right along the old home, if you were to pull that out and look, there would be a 12,800 square foot accessory structure, sitting right there where that road leads to, and there would be a Y going off to the northwest, slightly beyond the proposed new boundary back property line, and it would veer over to the northeast till it reached the backside of the 40-acre parcel, well, now 34-acre, and that leads to a hunting shack back there. So you have a double-purpose easement there. And I would request, I would make a motion to send this back to the ERC for further details. I think somewhat that the CPZ agreed with that, but I do believe if we leave that easement in place, they told me it would be easier right now to abandon the easement at a cost of about $30 to do that, as opposed to removing it later in the future, you would be looking at a circuit court issue, and there would be a lot of, if, there could be a lot of aggrieved people, in my opinion, if we don't address this. That trail, that dotted line, in my opinion, could have been moved to the western side of the proposed west boundary of that five-acre parcel, and a new trail could have been established. I have a reliable source that tells me that that 12,800 square foot building is being used for RV storage. And so it's, could almost be classified as a, instead of a GEA property, it could almost, you're getting a mishmash of zoning coming off of this particular 40-acre parcel, that it's not clearly depicted with what we're looking at on page 45, but that concerns me, and I think that should be looked at further by the ERC. And I would recommend a motion to send this Town of Eldron rezon back to the ERC. Thank you.
So your motion would be to commit back to the ERC for further action?
That's correct, Chair.
Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Langenhahn. Supervisor Jeong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we get some feedback from CPZ or the ERC a little bit about how this come to play in, if they have any response to Supervisor Straub? Just, I just want to get their feedback as well too, thank you.
The ERC Committee Chair, or we also have the Department Head Director here and CPZ zoning director. So, Chad, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So regarding this rezon, the map that was depicted in that CSM is only showing the area that they are going to be rezoning or planning on rezoning, it's not showing the other section of the lot, because the other lot is remaining in the general agricultural district. That easement that goes from, the easement he's talking about, that kind of goes past the house, unfortunately, we can't, somebody could have an easement essentially that we can't necessarily control where the easement, some easements we don't even hear about. You could have one in your, with your neighbor that's just housed in a safe in your house, and it's still an easement. Yeah, so if you take a look at this, the screen right there, that I believe the driveway he was referring to is kind of that dotted line in the middle there, it is an easement to access the building to the backside of the property, but as well as that hunting cabin. There is, there is road frontage on that lot. The other portion of the general agricultural original parcel that they could potentially move the easement to, but we really don't have a way to make them. If they've agreed upon this easement, we can't generally force them to change that easement.
I also attended an ERC committee meeting, and I remember that that was specifically asked about during that meeting as to whether or not there was access to that property in, in the, behind the parcel being developed, or being parceled off. And the property owner explained that that easement was to provide access to that, but it was known. Any other discussion? Supervisor Straub.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, when Chad pointed out that it does have street frontage on County Road II, that is correct, but if the pattern of rezoning on that particular parcel continues as it's seen. parcel continues as it seems to be, filling up, all frontages being filled up on II, eventually you're going to end up with a landlocked 28 acre GEA parcel in the back there. And you're going to have just little rabbit trails, as I like to call them, serving as roadways to these. I know that in Cronin weather, and I believe in the Village of Weston, I do believe you cannot have an accessory structure before you've had your principal building put on the lot first. I know that's true in Cronin weather. You have to have your principal structure building, the house you're going to live in, then you can build your accessory structures afterwards. What you're going to end up here is with accessory structure, the 13, nearly 13,000 square foot garage. Somewhere down the line, if you fill in the, make another five acre parcel until it fills in that east boundary, up to the east boundary of the 40 acre parcel, the, the street frontage will be gone. So every, someone's going to have to come in through another easement. So it's kind of an old school way of doing zoning. That's back in the day where easements were used all the time. And it almost seems like it's an invasive way of not properly laying out a division. And in the Town of Eldron, my understanding is that their comprehensive plan says that they have to have five acre parcels. A 40 acre parcel gives them eight potential lots. And so far, they've got three. And they're all, only one is, well, eventually, if you don't start putting in streets, you're jeopardizing the public safety for those folks living on these rabbit trails to get proper emergency vehicles back there in the event of a cataclysmic event. So I, I have been in the trades for 37 years, and this just, just was red flag all over it for me. And I know it's, it's perfectly legal because we haven't got a, maybe we need to do something to, to put a bite on that because people are going to take a little two lane trail every day instead of setting it up for the safety of themselves at the, you know, to save a dollar, they'll do that. So I'm greatly opposed to that. I think that the landowner should be approached because he owns the land on the western side. He should rededicate an easement. Let this person, today, that person's okay with having the trail running alongside his house, but nobody owns property forever. And one day, that's going to come back. And as stewards of, of this county, we should be looking several generations ahead. That would be a duty of all of us to, to make sure that we're not leaving something for some, a mess for somebody else to deal with in the future. So I would recommend sending this back to the ERC. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to invite corp counsel to address, you know, several questions and several points that Supervisor Straub has pointed out, that, you know, the, whether or not, you know, the county has the authority to require, you know, something different than what the, what the town has approved and the property owners have agreed to on their, their own property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't believe, and I don't know that the county has authority to require that easements be modified or moved as part of a rezone. I guess unless Shad knows something different because he's our zoning guru. But as far as I'm aware, I don't know of any statutory authority for that requirement. So I, I guess I would defer to Shad.
So one, one thing I'll add to that, that, that's correct. Essentially, as long as the, the parcel being created has the lot requirements and the access that our code lays out, if they have an extra easement on their property, we can't necessarily tell them no. With that being said, if in the future, another parcel is added to the west of this, it would also have to meet lot frontage. It would have to also meet access to the road, which means the lot that would be, we'll call it an island lot, behind those would also need to meet the criteria in our code, whether that be through an easement or, or if it, if it just met road frontage because they divided the lot in a certain shape. It would still need to meet access requirements.
So in essence, we can't, there's no way in the future that they could develop a landlocked parcel without having access to road?
Correct. The only, the only way that, that would happen is if it was a consecutive property owner. So if you have a property owner, if the property owner owns this lot and the lot behind it, it's considered legal access.
Correct. Okay. Other discussion?
Chair Gibbs, this is Supervisor Seifelt.
Supervisor Seifelt, go ahead.
Yes. On that property, the reason they went with the five acres is that they sold the house separate from the barn in back, which the barn is going to be sold for a beef operation, which it was previously. And if there is access needed, they can come in from the west side of the property. There is a field entrance there, and they could come in from back of the barn. But there is, I asked the question at CPZ if there was an easement for them to get back to that cow barn. And they said, yes, there is. And there is a buyer for that barn soon as this rezone gets approved. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Shafensky.
Thank you, Chair. This might be a question either for Chad or for corp counsel. In terms of emergency act vehicle access, what are the requirements that, that we have to hold to for a property? Because that, that could be a concern going forward.
I'll start, and then Shad, feel free to elaborate because you know more than I do. I think really the requirements that the county imposes here are the zoning requirements. So the zoning code is written in a way to ensure emergency vehicle access. So as long as access is consistent with our zoning code, it would meet the legal requirements that the county has to follow. I don't know, Shad, if that was too, I don't know if that was a good explanation or not?
I think that, that covered it unless there's...
Okay, great.
Okay. So really, the, the issue before us now, we don't have any legal issues with because there is legal access. However, sometime in the future, the property owner might come forward with a proposal to divide some property, and we might say no at that point in time because there would not be the legal required access. But today, there is.
Correct. Say that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Straub?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I was just comparing that. Does it have a width of what that driveway is that's going through the middle of that property? Shad, do you know?
I'm not, I'm not aware of the, the actual width of that easement.
No, I, maybe corporation counsel can help on this, but I thought that state statute 82.18 would be applicable in this situation where a minimum width was required. I'm not sure, though, on that, so I'm asking. Thank you.
So 82.18 references the required width of town highways. I don't think that would be applicable to an easement width. I don't think that would be applicable to that particular easement.
And if I may follow up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, please.
Is there a, is there a minimum requirement for an easement width in state statute or county ordinance?
Shad has an answer.
Chad, please.
Yeah, so as far as a minimum easement, the, the short answer is no, unless it deals with the legal access of the property. So if, if the legal access, if it doesn't have, let's say if it doesn't have road frontage, the very minimum our code allows us to go is 33 feet. And, and again, that's dependent on, on different circumstances. But that would be the minimum we could go for, for legal access. But seeing that this parcel would already have road frontage, and the one behind it also has road frontage, we would use that as the legal access.
Supervisor Boots, call a question. Is there objection to question being called? There's an objection. So is there a second to the motion for question? Okay, just a second. The clerk needs to get in step with us. Supervisor Boots called a question, and Supervisor Jeong seconded the question being called. Since there's a second, we will go to the vote. There is no debate on this. A yes will end debate on the, on the question, and a no vote will continue debate. So again, we're only voting on ending debate. And that, so a yes vote in sufficient number will end debate, a no vote will not. And this does require a two-thirds majority to end debate. Is everybody clear on what they're voting on? Okay, and we'll, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Seifelt, how do you vote?
Yes.
And the motion is carried. Debate has ended. We are now at the main motion, and the motion that we have on the table is to refer back to committee. A yes vote will refer it back to the committee for further discussion. A no vote will put us back on a point of the original motion to approve. So again, a no vote will get us back to a motion to approve. A yes vote will refer it back to committee. Is everybody clear on what they're voting on? Okay, so we're, the motion is, on the table is a motion to refer. So a yes vote, and successful yes vote refers it back to committee. A no vote puts us back on the point where we were prior to the motion to refer. And that is, that will take that up if that motion, depending on the result of this motion. Is there, everyone clear on the vote? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Seifelt?
No.
Okay. And we will proceed. And the noes have it. We are back then now to a motion to approve. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Supervisor Langenhahn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I was too quick for the button on my iPad. I just want to add a couple of things. The first one being, and it's sort of in relation to the item being referred back to committee, is that if it was to be referred back to committee, which it isn't now, but that would have required additional posting. So considering that this was a timely sale or a timely matter in the consideration of the sale, I would rather the item be settled tonight. That way, the property owners aren't just left out in the cold. The other thing I was just going to add as far as the rezone process in general, you know, we place a lot of responsibility at the local government level, at the town level, that the towns know their towns the best. So when it comes to things like ambulance services, just public facilities in general, we really trust that those local governments know their communities the best. The last thing I'll say is, is that even if we're, even if the county board were to deny this tonight and decided to, which is well within their right, they could, the town board could still override the county board with the approval of this rezone. So given those ideas, and my trust in the local governments to, to know their communities best, I will be supporting this just as I supported at the committee level. Thank you.
Supervisor Jeong withdrew your request to speak. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Motion, yes, will approve the rezone. No, will not.
Supervisor Seifelt, yes?
Thank you, Supervisor. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. And we'll move on now to item 13B, a resolution adopting the West Side Master Plan. Do we have, are you ready? And just a second, and then, so please hold off on a motion in a second until the clerk has the item typed in. This is majority. Okay, is there a motion? Motion by Supervisor Mask, and second by Supervisor Leahy. Discussion. Supervisor Shafensky?
Thank you, Chairman. Having seen this proposal come through ERC several times, I would just like to state that I think they've done a, a great job in putting together a vision. And understand, you know, it is just a vision. It's, it's not something cast in concrete. This is not what we're going to build. It's a vision of what we might build over the next five, 10, maybe even 20 years. With that in mind, I wholeheartedly support it.
Any other discussion? Supervisor, any other discussion?
Supervisor Seifelt?
Supervisor Seifelt, please.
Thank you, Chair. We've had a Fair Board meeting last night, which I did not attend because I am a little on the ill side. But I talked to the president this morning, and Jamie was out at our meeting last night. And when it comes to the Marathon Park portion of it, Fair Board will work with the park department. And on the way, there is going to be changes. But Fair Board will work with park department. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Supervisor Silver?
Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. I am also in favor of the master plan, but I would also like to see, there's 18 other parks in Marathon County, and I would like to see a plan for those 18 other parks because those parks take care of the rural community in Marathon County. In my part of the county, which is the southwest, our closest park is over 20 miles away. So I'd like to see a plan for the rest of Marathon County. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Baker?
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
So I want to thank staff and MSA consultants for the hard work and thoughtful approach that they brought to developing the plan. I support many of the features of the plan, but I do have some concerns. First, I would echo the concerns raised during the HR finance regarding the county funding of indoor sports complex without, that may primarily be used by several schools when other communities paid for their own ice rinks, often with substantial donations. But this concern can perhaps be alleviated by seeking donations as was suggested by HR finance. But I don't think that's spelled out clearly enough in the plan. My biggest concern, though, is that we're not evaluating the expected cost of the plan as part of a comprehensive look at our needs and wants and funding ability over the next 10 years. We have substantial debt, and we're already significantly over our self-imposed debt limit that's laid out in 1.515. We would like to build a $76 million highway PRF and emergency response center, a regional forensic center, a public safety center. And we've substantially... forensic center, a public safety center, and we've substantially increased the county's direct and guaranteed debt load with the guaranteed North Central Health Care and Buck Tussle debt. And I would like to see HR Finance and the finance director put together like a 10-year projection, just a couple pages of how this would impact our debt going forward before we vote on this. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Supervisor Longenhahn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to highlight something, as far as the plan itself, I was initially skeptical of it, but I think staff did a tremendous job detailing the real intent of the plan, which is to provide a vision for what that park could be one day, not what will it be one day. As most of you are aware on this board, this group cannot bind a future county board to obligate any of its funds. You cannot do that. That being said, what this plan really does is it demonstrates the ability for our park department to work with the community partners to make that park something special. And in the future, if that is something to be explored with, you know, obtaining community partnerships with private businesses to improve those facilities or what they might offer one day, I would support that 100%. I just don't think that we're at that discussion point yet, primarily because none of this has been set in motion at all. This is just a vision. As many have noted that, you know, for a lot of this to even set into motion, the highway department would have to be moved, and there'd have to be a number of other things taking place. So given that, the intent of the plan being explained, I'm going to continue supporting this at the committee, or just like I did at committee, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Dickinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My other concern, besides the costs and potential costs that are going to be out there, as was stated before, is the idea that we have a plan, and we often speak about plans in our meetings, that once we have a plan, it creates another plan and things start moving forward. So I guess I would say that having a master plan does set things in motion and directs us towards what is before us. And that is a concern simply because it is quite ambitious, what it's looking for. I generally support it, but it's quite large, and I do have those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will proceed to vote. Supervisor Seefeld.
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried, and we're down to item 13D, amending the general code of ordinances for Marathon County, chapters 15, 17, and 18, ordinance 0-6-23. What is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Zhang, second by Supervisor Vinsky. Any discussion? Okay, please wait. When we edit all of the additionals, the clerk has to get caught back up where we're at now. Okay, discussion? Any discussion? Okay, see, Supervisor Dickinson, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pressed it before we had the actual resolution on there. Thank you.
Thank you. So the only concern I have is in chapter 17. It talks about the 500-person event policy. So my question is, there was a special event committee that was supposed to meet, talking about our general code, I think 12.04. I don't think that special event committee has met yet, a large committee, large assemblies. So what I would propose is that we not include that portion in this vote to remove that, and so I'd make a motion to remove that section until that committee has a chance to meet and discuss, so then you can kind of merge these two ideas together. Thank you.
Go ahead, a couple, Corp Counsel would like to address that before we get a second on that motion.
I just want to make sure I'm restating it correctly, and you can see if I got it right. So the motion is to amend the ordinance 0-6-23 to remove from chapter 17 the update to the event portion of the zoning code?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? And just wait until the clerk is ready? Is, no, is there a second by Supervisor Hardingger? And I would ask the CPZ zoning director as to, and CPZ as to if the rationale, there's something that is time-sensitive on the amendment to that chapter, that we would bring back additional amendments once that group had met? So if there's a reason why this needs to be addressed today, prior to the events work group meeting.
I mean, I think our intent, and I think your question is to why the 500, is that kind of, am I understanding that correctly? Okay, so as it stands right now, we don't have any numbers as it relates to special events in our code, and we have been advised that our assembly's ordinance is not truly enforceable as it is, I think, from an implementation standpoint of our special event code. Sometimes a lot of the requests we get related to that are camping. Okay, so there doesn't really need to be too much that we're asking an applicant to provide in terms of, like, they need a special event permit for some sort of camping. But then we also have larger events where we're seeing there could be a more significant impact on surrounding neighbors. So we were trying to establish something in the interim to help us develop levels of requirement depending on what the special event is they're asking for that permit for. Our intent would be, obviously, to be a part of the 12.04 modifications as well, and we would need to come back and modify chapter 17 based on what comes out of the new 12.04. But I think from an implementation standpoint, we're having trouble sometimes holding, like, figuring out what standards to hold people to, when some people just want a camping permit for a few days, and other people want to hold larger events that are more significantly impacting their neighbors.
So if I understand you correctly, right now, our code is not enforceable because we don't have a number of, in it, as far as the number of participants, and this would establish that. That's not to say that we're not going to still create the task force or the group to look at what a large event policy would be in the future. Okay, Corp Counsel would like to also address the board.
I just want to, I guess, expand on that. I think our existing 17.204.64 is enforceable as it's currently written. It just doesn't have the numbers or the additional information that is being proposed to be added. What isn't enforceable is the county's section 12.04 of our county general code relating to special events. So that part isn't enforceable. This one is, but it doesn't have the specifics that would lend themselves to our zoning staff being able to actually do much with it.
So is it clear as to what is trying to be done? Supervisor Dickinson.
It is clear. I guess I would say, you mentioned the word interim, I don't know if we, you know, making policy and making codes and ordinances interim when we're really trying to work to something already, I guess I would kind of push back on that. And so again, I would like to see this moved out until we can figure that out, if it is enforceable, which is stated it is.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? So the motion is to amend and remove section, chapter 17. 204.64.
64.
Is it clear? So that would be the motion?
And just to be clear, that's not to remove the entire section, it's just to remove the proposed amendments to that section, I believe, Supervisor Dickinson. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Is it clear what a yes vote will do? Okay, it will remove that amendment from that section. We'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Seefeld.
No.
And Supervisor?
No.
No? Okay, we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Now, back to the motion as amended. The amended is to amend the Marathon County chapters 15, 17, and 18 with the one section of amendment removed, ordinance 0-6-23. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Seefeld.
Yes.
And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to human resources resolutions from the Human Resources, Finance, and Property Committee and Infrastructure Committee approving the 2023 budget transfers for Marathon County Department of Appropriations Resolution R-8-23, and this does require a two-thirds majority vote. Motion by Leahy, and second by Vice Chair McEwen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Supervisor Seefeld, yes.
Supervisor Seefeld with a yes, thank you, and we'll proceed. And the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on from, to item F16, from the Human Resources, Finance, and Property Committee and the Environmental Resources Committee, a resolution for the use of the environmental impact funds to fund repair and replacement of the Big O' plane air raiders, resolution 10-23. There's two resolutions, so in your motion, I need clarity as to, Supervisor Robinson?
I would move to adopt the joint resolution from HR Finance and ERC.
Okay, Supervisor Longenhahn with the second. So the motion is to approve the HR Finance and environmental, or the HR Finance Committee resolution on the air raider fund. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Okay, we needed to have it, clerk needs to change it on the program. And we are ready to proceed to vote. Supervisor Seefeld.
Yes.
Yes, Supervisor Seefeld.
Yes.
Supervisor Mask? Did we lose connection? Supervisor Mask? Supervisor Mask, I see you've rejoined the meeting. Can you vote?
Okay, I will, but I don't know what I'm voting on because I was disconnected.
Okay, we are voting, okay. We're voting on the Environmental Resources, HR Finance Committee, resolution for the environmental impact funds for the Big O' plane air raiders, and we're using the one that was developed by HR Finance.
Right, and I had some comments to make, and I missed being able to speak.
Okay, I would invite. Okay, you are recognized, provide your comments. And that's simply because I haven't called for the vote yet. So Supervisor Mask? But we haven't announced it. Supervisor Mask, please go ahead. But if you wanted to address the committee, the board, you're still welcome to Supervisor Mask. Supervisor Mask, did you want to provide comment on the proposal before I declare the vote going ahead? We'll proceed, and the vote will be declared, and the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. And we'll move on from the Executive Committee. Item G17, amending the administrator's work plan to include the opioid settlement fund option. And just one second. Okay, showing up on the program twice, we'll vote a second time on the same thing. It's the only way the clerk has to removing the environmental impact fund vote. So again, we're voting on the same thing that we just voted on, and that is a resolution in support of the Big O' plane air raiders, resolution 10-23 from the HR Finance Committee.
Supervisor Seefeld, yes.
Thank you, Supervisor, Supervisor Lamont? All right, we are good to go. Proceed, and the motion is carried with the same exact unanimous consent from the board. Thank you. And we'll move on now to the Executive Committee, and item G17, amending the administrator's work plan to include the opioid settlement funds option, resolution 5-23. Motion by Supervisor, Vice Chair McEwen, second by Supervisor Marash. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote.
Supervisor Seifelt, yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Seifelt. Supervisor Baker, can you provide your vote, voice vote, please? And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried unanimous. I marked Supervisor Baker abstained only because we lost connection to him. We are down to announcements and/or requests. Any announcements and/or requests? The clerk has several. Needs signatures from HR finance, infrastructure, environmental resources, and executive committee. Any other announcements and/or requests? Okay, we are down to the infamous motion. Item H19. Motion by Vice Chair to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Shafinski. Any -- no discussion? All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.